The October twenty first meeting of the Town Council of the Green, Town of Greentown will come to order. You all have minutes of the previous meeting on September sixteenth. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as reviewed and signed in caucus.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Standish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling, any questions, comments, or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the dockets this evening, the wastewater fund docket for this evening is one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. The stormwater fund docket sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and six cents. The water fund docket sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. And the general fund docket along with two payroll voucher statements is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. I would entertain a motion to approve the dockets and payroll statements as reviewed and signed in caucus.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, any questions, comments, or discussion on the dockets? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Peel, sir, you're up this evening.
Um, North Meridian first, I walked around the building tonight, when I got here, it looked markedly better and
Yes.
secure, I didn't see anything that appeared to be open or, um, it appears to me they have brought the building into compliance with regard to the nuisance issues. My advice would be to forego the previously issued fines and let me close my file on that building.
Uh, by closing the file, is there anything required on the court order that we were given to do to close that out?
Nope.
It just sits there?
It just sits there.
Okay, great. Uh, alright, you want, I guess you want to deal with the issues one at a time then, since you have several or?
Uh, we can, I did review the ordinance, the salary ordinance draft and employee policy, uh, saw no issues with it. Uh, with regard to the Harvey Drive property, that'll be
Yep.
Whatever the council's pleasure is with that, uh, the COI statement we just touched on briefly, that can be approved but needs to be
Subject to his signature?
Before it's turned over to the clerk for recording.
Alright.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Peel, has anyone else had an opportunity to look at the building, I mean, I've, I've looked at the front, I, I, it's been a bit since I've gone around the, the back, but the back has doors that are secure. I don't believe any changes, you walked around, remained
I walked all the way around the back, yeah.
I don't, I don't think, but their, their lower brick, I don't know that that's as much of an issue.
I was told, um, I didn't see it, but the top has been
Yeah, you can look, I got a picture I can send you if you want, yeah. It's been, um, tuck pointed and some brick replaced and where they didn't replace brick, it appears that, uh, additional mortar's been put in that location. Uh, they cleaned the sidewalk afterwards, I believe the barricades are down as well, so.
Uh, if, if you guys are good with that then, I would entertain a motion to vacate the, how many new, the, the
Ten or fifteen.
Ten or, it's fifteen. Fifteen nuisance fines that were issued on the building, um, as it appears to be, uh, brought in compliance.
So moved.
Now, a motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
I'll second the
A second from Mr. Lance, are there some questions or concerns?
I would just, again, repeat the fact that this has been nearly a two-year
Two years this month.
Nearly, nearly a two-year process of trying to get the property owner, um, and so appreciate everyone's work, uh, in making this finally, uh, get to the point where it's, uh, safe for the people of Greentown to walk down the street and, uh, the nuisance has been abated. So sometimes, uh, we move at the speed of slow when it comes to government, but I appreciate the fact it's finally been, uh, after two years, it's finally been done.
Like a comment I would have, if we have the option, if something were to fall into disrepair, a window where they're open, we can always go back to the nuisance Abatement process, we have that option.
Yeah, the nuisance ordinance wouldn't go away, if the building fell out of compliance, you could reissue a new
Yeah, it's just the citations that have been issued.
Um, yep. Good enough.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all is in favor of abating the, uh, fifteen nuisance or nuisance notifications against, uh, one nineteen, one twenty-one North Meridian signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, next issue then would be the salary ordinance, uh, this will be the first read, thank you, I guess I could bring it up digitally, but this is This is the first introduction of the salary ordinance for, uh, twenty twenty-six, it's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three establishing the, uh, salaries of town council and town employees. There are no changes to the council president, council, uh, fifty-six hundred, council members thirty-seven hundred, clerk treasurer thirty-five nine twenty-eight, um, and the, the percentages are available in the actual ordinance. Uh, deputy clerk treasurer thirty-two nine twenty-eight, town supervisor water operator seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty, wastewater operator slash water operator, uh, fifty-four thousand with water certification would be fifty-seven thousand. Street supervisor, uh, forty-seven thousand four, utility, utility office manager forty thousand and eight, uh, town marshal fifty-nine sixteen. Part-time deputies are set at, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour, uh, part-time street employee twenty-five dollars an hour, street employee twenty-seventy, wastewater employee twenty-three, uh, water wastewater employees twenty-one fifty, part-time seasonal thirteen fifty, part-time office thirteen fifty, utility clerk sixteen fifty. Plan commission members receive seventy-five dollars a year, plan administrators thirty-six hundred dollars a year, a hundred and fifty dollars semi-monthly, board of appeals seventy-five dollars a year and on-call pay ten dollars. We have, um, what we call longevity, uh, lump sum bonus of, um, it's, it's a hundred dollars per year, uh, and for Mr. Mendel, that's twenty-one hundred, twelve hundred for Ms. Duke, twelve hundred for Ms. Good, uh, eleven hundred for Ms. Mitz, nine hundred for Mr. Mock, eight hundred for Mr. Sanders, five hundred Swisher. Five hundred for Mr. Howick, uh, Ms. Hubbard, uh, one hundred and Mr. Howell, one hundred. So that is the first introduction of that ordinance. Moving on, uh, Mr. Omen is here this evening, he has, um, with some discussions with town personnel, uh, offered to increase his bid to five hundred thousand dollars for the East Crest Five, five, five thousand, sorry, did you have a heart attack there? I don't, I went, I wanted to go from what you, I messed up, I wanted to go from what you'd originally bid to your, you know, like, damn, he sold, I think he said down there. Wow, I apologize, I wanted to go from what you'd bid before to what you'd done and I messed up. Anyway, for five thousand dollars, uh, Mr. Lance's motion to accept the first number I mentioned is declined, no. I would entertain a motion to, um, offer the, uh, accept, uh, Mr. Omen's bid of five thousand dollars for the East Crest Harvey Drive property.
So just to clarify, now there, we've got people here, the assessed value was around twenty-five?
That's what it's on Beacon at, yep.
Okay, and we bid at twenty and the They, that was the, uh, that was the, what we advertised that, and then the other property, uh, was advertised at five and was purchased by, by five, four, five?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing no motion, is there a motion from the council?
I would like to see it relisted and maybe we drop the initial, um, I think five, first, I think that the five thousand dollars is below what we'd expect to get from that property. I think it's low, um, but if we relisted it, my understanding incorrect if I'm wrong, is that the only person, is Mr. Omen is the only person right now that we could have entered negotiations in because
Correct, he was the only person who responded
Who responded.
To that parcel.
To that parcel, so if there's another individual out there that says, hey, I missed a boat on this, I may be interested, we, we cannot negotiate with them at this point in time?
Correct.
Okay, and if we wanted to do that, we would have to re, reopen it?
Correct, we would have to advertise for bids to be accepted, um, and go through the same process.
Okay.
And, I don't know, what's, what's the cost of an ad in the Tribune, uh, whatever it is, yeah.
I'd have to pull it up.
Yeah, it'd just be the cost of advertising again and, uh, they get, yeah, so many days to respond.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion then that we relist that property and that we lower the Ideal price, the expected price, the one, thank you, sir, and we, uh, open it up and we put the minimum bid at ten thousand and see if we have any more interest in that and that opens it up to other people who may want to bid, um, and then we would have more room to negotiate, um, a price that's more acceptable in my mind for a piece of property.
Ten thousand? You said ten thousand?
Yeah, I said ten.
Is that what the negotiating price is?
I was just asking Mr. Peel, he's saying if, if you're willing to do the ten thousand, you can approach the council.
Is that the value, that's the minimum value?
My proposal, um, is that it's to be re-advertised at the minimum bid of ten.
But if he's willing to pay ten? Okay, let's have to, okay. I'm talking to Mr. Peel, that's
Sorry, we're trying to figure out the legality of what we're doing here.
Well, it's, it's legal to re-advertise.
Right, but I think the question was if he wanted to have a conversation.
Would you be willing to sub his ten thousand bid?
If he were willing to offer ten thousand in the meeting, would you still want it advertised?
Are you looking for that?
Are you looking for that amount or do you
That's, that's what I'm looking, that's
Are you looking for that amount or do you want more interested?
I'm looking at that amount. If there's other interest in part, I mean, if not, then we'll advertise it at ten, that's just me among, that's my, my feeling.
Would it be prudent to vote on the ten thousand dollar and then, then the council has spoken of, of what we would accept and then if Mr. Omen wants to pay that immediately, would that be, because right now I guess it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, whether we vote on it first and agree or not.
Correct.
But don't we have to agree, well, right now, the, the, uh, right now, there's a twenty thousand dollar minimum bid still out there on our, on our behalf.
No, there was, he failed to meet the minimum, Indiana code allows us to enter, I'm sorry, go ahead, allows us to enter negotiation with that Own bidder, who had put in one thousand dollars, I believe, it was, thank you, yeah, I had thousands, anyway, I apologize, yeah, the hundred makes a difference, and then, um,
He's now made an offer of five.
Five.
Which you can accept or reject.
Which you can accept or reject, or he's here in person, he, hearing the wishes of the council would, it's up to him whether he would, um, make a statement to modify his current offer.
If ten thousand is the magic number, I'm fine with that.
That was gonna be your motion and
Correct.
I'm sure that would have passed so that we would have agreed to that, so
So I can say change.
So, do we need to make, sorry, go ahead.
Entertain a motion
Thank you.
To, uh, thank you to Mr. Omen, has increased his
Offer in the meeting.
From five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, I would entertain a motion to accept ten thousand dollars for the parcel on East Crest slash Harvey Drive.
I move to accept that, so, yes.
Mr. Standish, he's made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Omen. I'm very happy it's gonna stay local, um, with someone that's gonna do a great job and thank you for increasing your bid, it's greatly appreciated and congratulations. Eat it like that five hundred thousand.
Yeah, better than mine, yeah.
You might have five hundred thousand.
I was thinking about a different building, I, I
You got a smoking deal on that, same.
Yeah.
Save for a nine thousand dollars, thank you.
Get with me after the meeting, I need to get some information.
Okay. Yeah, whatever LLC that you wanna put it in, yeah.
What's that?
Introduce your partner here.
Oh, this is my son, Ryan.
Ryan? Okay, where'd you get that name from? Nice to meet you, I've heard good things about you, work ethic and things like, I digress, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, Ryan.
I look forward to the property
Thank you for supporting the town.
Becoming productive like your other properties in the area, thank you. Uh, moving on then, we have, yeah, we have a conflict of interest, uh, app form from Mr. Skinner, council member, Town of Greentown in Howard, uh, his business, uh, EP does vehicle equipment installation, consoles, gun racks, emergency lights, radar, storage, um, drawers, et cetera. Uh, typically his, uh, dollar amount for purchases, ten to twenty thousand dollars per vehicle, this is, I'm just reading it right off the form, the legal name of his vendor is Eastside Outfitter, um, the government entity that makes purchases from that out company is the Town of Greentown, obviously, and is, is required to be approved in a council meeting. So I would entertain a motion to accept Mr. Skinner's, uh, uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement.
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Contingent upon his signature.
Yes, contingent, thank you for that modification. Uh, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion to approve Mr. Skinner's conflict of interest disclosure statement, subject to his signature and mine, um, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Just to note, State Board of Accounts said they, they say these are good for a year upon signature, so, just to let you know, that's how they audit those.
As
Probably a good idea to make it just a matter of practice, that
The first of the year.
August meeting or your January meeting, just the same time every year, you just, anybody that needs to fill those out, do them and then they're done.
Do it along with the nepotism compliance.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
As mentioned in caucus, uh, we will be receiving, uh, financial institution tax and the commercial vehicle excise tax, uh, revenues, they're down significantly, but we need to indicate where those would go. I would entertain a motion that those funds be placed into the general funds upon, general fund upon receipt.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Standish, a second from Mr. Lance, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, moving on to the Greentown Volunteer Fire Company, we appreciate all they do, I do not see them here this evening. Moving on then to reports. If I can get my iPad to work here. Police report, Marshall Howick, you're up.
For the month of September, we had, uh, ten traffic arrests, seventeen warnings, eight ordinance violations, sixteen cases investigated, um, zero criminal arrests, that's first, sixty-five calls for service and four accidents, uh, investigated.
Anything you'd like to add to the report, Marshall Howick?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve the police department report for September as presented.
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, all is in favor of approving the report as presented, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, moving on to the water utility report for September twenty, twenty-five, maximum flow one hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred gallons, minimum daily flow one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred gallons for an average daily flow of one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten. Monthly, uh, total of gallons, four million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred, we had sixteen disconnects in the month of September and none are currently disconnected. We had two TCR rule tests performed and both tested absent satisfactory, uh, from, and reported IM, read meters, completed customer service orders, performed data logs on meters, repaired water main break at Mill Street, raised the meter pit on Main Street, replaced three failed meters, exercised valves, uh, water valves around town and performed maintenance on the generators at Wells for five out in the, out of the sticks. I would entertain a motion to approve the water utility report as presented.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, moving on to the Oh, did I, since I wasn't looking at my agenda, I skipped that, um, that's for the water operator and that would be effective August sixth.
October eleventh. October eleventh.
October eleventh, the other one's August sixteenth, um, as, uh, when we modified the salary ordinance to bring Mr. Howell on board, uh, there was the option for a salary with and without, uh, obtaining his water operator's license, he has attained both water operator and distribution and I would entertain a motion to move his salary effective October eleventh for the next pay period, uh, increasing it by that three thousand dollars per annum.
So moved.
And a motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, Mr. Howell, I mean, that was, uh, getting that done quickly and we appreciate that, you were obviously ready to take those exams and that's, that's great, thank you. Moving on, thank you, Teresa, for keeping me, moving on to the street department report for September, performed utility locates for Indiana eight-one-one, cleaned equipment and picked up brush and trash around town, repaired puddles throughout the town, continued town line cleaning of catch basins using the VAC machine. Prepared the steel cutoff saw with a new carburetor and fuel lines, trimmed trees along the landfill range, repaired the storm line on Meridian Street and replenished stockpile of sand and stone, I would entertain a motion to approve the street department report as presented.
So moved.
Pardon me, we have a motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Standish, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, for the September wastewater treatment plant, operated at twenty percent of the point five eight million gallon per day design capacity, can tell we haven't had much rain, monthly rainfall total one point one four inches, monthly plant flow average a hundred and fourteen thousand gallons today for four million, seven hundred and fifty-seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Performed all routine sampling and testing, general cleaning and maintenance, cleaned the lines at Howard and Holiday, replaced the battery on the lift station auto call-out system, WW Williams replaced thermostats on the generator, placed the golf cart top, cleaned and performed maintenance on all plant blowers and performed maintenance on the alum pump. I would entertain a motion to approve the wastewater report as presented.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Lance, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Everling, any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the wastewater report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, moving on, Marshall Howick, any old or new business, sir?
Uh, yes, I was approached by an individual that, um, requests that the council possibly look at High School Road as being, um, adopted as a school zone for students that are wa, after school, walking down High School Road to go to the new sports complex on, uh, Meridian Street. So I was asked to approach the council about it, uh, about looking into it or, or tabling, um, or thinking about making that a, a school zone, twenty mile an hour school zone for the safety of the children.
Alright. School zones are
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty miles per hour, it's currently thirty through there.
Yeah.
Which would be, uh, we would have to purchase, if I'm not
Yeah, we'd have to post it.
Have to purchase the signs as well, so, probably one at each end of the block of the street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, I think that the issue becomes as it would require an ordinance and public hearing, because there are associated fines, I would like to sweep that into concerns for looking at streets that should be one-sided park, you know, no parking this side, I, 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 I'd like to get the value for the public hearing and, and try to Yep. Combine as many as possible, I, I don't disagree with that suggestion at all.
Putting it out there for consideration from whenever we're ready to look into
Sounds like a good project for an upcoming street superintendent to work on, of identifying and work with the volunteer fire company on that, okay.
You're right, Scott, it would be more efficient to do a whole bunch of traffic stuff and some ordinance as opposed to ten little pieces.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Peel. Thank you, Marshall Howick, I think, uh, council is in agreement and will figure out how to get that done and, and not let it slip here.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, uh, Mr. Lance, any old or new business, sir?
Uh, nothing old, I just wanna, again, uh, appreciate everything that goes on in this town and I appreciate, uh, the businesses that are, continue to contribute to our, our economic growth here in town and things are going on, I just wanna say thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lance, Ms. Everling?
Not at this time.
Mr. Standish?
Uh, to follow up on Mr. Howick, I, I believe the facilities right now, the season is over, but I would definitely like to get that in place before the spring season opens up, uh, out there, they're not gonna be doing a whole lot in the winter, but I would appreciate it if we could jump on that, uh, before the kids are walking over for, uh, baseball and softball in Tennessee.
Very early next year, yeah, first quarter, definitely, yeah.
And, and congratulations again, Mr. Howell, and thanks all the, the time and play, and congratulations, um, to the, uh, to Teresa Duke, uh, and everyone who works so hard on that state audit, the state audit, um, is nothing to joke with, uh, and joke about, um, it's very intense, and so congratulations on running a very, very tight ship, uh, again this year and coming up with flying colors, uh, State Board of Accounts.
Here, here, yes. Ms. Duke, any old or new business, and I'll get to my issues, yep, I got that one, um, I think the one that she would have is I see no reason to meet on November fourth. So, notification, the next meeting then will be, as listed at the bottom of the minutes, uh, November eighteenth at six-thirty, um, uh, some old and new business items I have to deal with, uh, with the departure of Mr. Smith, um, I was remiss in, um, confirming the appointment of Mr. Mock as the plan commissioner to add that pay, um, Mr. Smith's departure was October sixteenth, I'd like to go, uh, August sixteenth, boy, I am just full of mistakes this evening, um, August sixteenth, um, and I would like, uh, a motion to authorize, it's an appointed position, I'm appointing him in there, the concern is the pay, I'd like a, a motion to, uh, give him back pay to August sixteenth for the plan commission position, he has been fulfilling that role. Thank you. Now, a motion from Ms. Everling, is there a second to, uh, approve the back pay for the plan commission position?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lance, any questions, comments, or discussion, all is in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, then the other item I would like to bring up is, um, well, this is, uh, well, this is, uh, that will be advertised hearing. I wanted to bring up the inter-local agreement that was, um, sent out. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review it, Mr., um, Peel has reviewed it and indicated it's acceptable. As Mr. Standish pointed out in caucus, it has a ten-year term, it can be renegotiated at that time, it gives us an opportunity to evaluate the use. The inter-local agreement would be subject to approval of their improvement permit. Um, so, uh, but, uh, it's prepared to be entered into by, uh, the Howard County Recycling District, which Mr. Moore's the president and the Town of Greentown, of which I'm the president, so I'd entertain a motion authorizing me to sign the inter-local agreement between the Howard County Recycling District and the Town of Greentown for lease of the property at nine hundred east fifty south Maple Street, basically.
So a point of clarification.
Sure.
Um, at, at the border zoning appeals, that's what they will be presenting. This is the type offense, this is the size offense, things like that, correct?
Size offense, yep.
So we're just approving that we are interested in having them, giving them permission pending approval by the
They can't do any, so they would become a tenant, but they can't do any improvement till their improvement permit is approved, so it's a two-step. And since the zoning appeal would be a separate action, I just wanted to go ahead and get this, because the zoning appeal meeting will hopefully happen before November eighteen.
That zoning appeal, is that open to the public then? Are they aware of all of this?
The, uh, just on the border zoning appeals, just like any, uh, it would be a variance of use. Um, all adjoining properties will receive a certified letter or personally notified by our marshal, Mr. Howell.
Thank you.
So did I pay attention? I think you made a motion, I believe, Ms. Everling, right?
You made, you
I said I would entertain a motion, I was waiting for it, yeah, I, alright, I apologize.
Yes.
So you will, but Ms. Everling will move, I put that, and then is there a second? You're shaking your head.
Second.
Alright, Mr. Standish, any questions, comments or discussion beyond what we had on the concern about the two-step process?
I would just ask that, communicated to them because there were some questions about the type of dumpster, if, if they could bring pictures,
Absolutely.
uh, items like that that we can actually see, that would help maybe alleviate some of the concerns and let people on the border zoning appeals, uh, be aware of visually what we're talking about here, yes.
Yes. Alright, that sounds good. We have a motion and second, all's in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Guests this evening? Any guests to bring issues before the council this evening? Hearing no guests, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Standish, second, Mr. Lance, all in favor?